Calling to order the Planning and zoning Commission of April 6, 2023. To order, can we start off with roll call?
Yes, sir. Hector Garcia?
Present.
Luis Gonzalez?
Present.
Mike Maron? Manolo Riquelme?
Present.
Johnny Navarro?
Present.
Yuxin Wang? Regina Portillo?
Present.
Daniela Salaspos? Ana Vila Aguirre? For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have four.
Okay. Do we have any other commission members called in to be asked to either their mess or be later?
I believe Daniela Salaspos did.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Let's go ahead and stand for the official allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're now going to move on to the consideration of the approval minutes of meeting March 16, 2023.
Motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Was there any citizens comments?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll now open the public hearing and start off with item 6A, review, consideration of a site plan for a planned unit development, PUD overlay. Review and consideration of a site plan for the Sierra Ranch Town Homes Development located east of San Isidro Parkway and north of San Bar Loop. Planned unit development overlay zone for this area established by the ordinance number 2022-0-043. The intent is residential townhomes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is STX Land Development LLC. The engineer of record is Ricardo Villarreal PE from Top Site Civil Group. The proposed use is residential townhomes. The zoning for this 120 lot development is a B4 PUD, Community Business District Planned Unit Development. The general location? Aerial view? Street view? The proposed site plan? Cross-sections? Pardon me, floor plans? And the item for consideration. So, the Planned Unit Development Ordinance allows and gives some flexibility to the developers in their design, and the items that can be for consideration for the P&amp;Z are the items as shown, which can be colors and construction materials, minimum lot height and setback dimensions, which they are asking for, some reductions there, fencing and screening types, density, so they are asking for increased density, parking and street sidewalk configuration.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so a PUD request starts off at council. So, it's an overlay onto a piece of property. They'll, they go to council, they request the PUD. If they receive it, the overlay, then they come to the planning department and they start the process to negotiate some changes that they want to make. And the reason for it is the PUD was designed for density. So, this allows for them to work with maybe smaller lots, adjust some setbacks, which you can't do in the regular process. So, they would, they go through the PUD process, and that gives you the opportunity to look at this and, and work with them to make some adjustments, and then they can, they can start the, the building process. But they do have to go to city council first to get this PUD overlay, and then they come this way, so. Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, Ricardo Villarreal with Top Site Civil Group. Like Mr. Navarro was saying, this is the mechanism to provide for, in essence, townhome projects that we used to get a special use permit approved before. Now, there's a brand-new process to go through. We've already come and, and gotten the site plan per se approved by the Commission and by city council. It happened close to about a year ago, and so the process now requires us to submit our full set of plans to the building department, and the building department gives us our okay before we come back to you all, which that's at the point where we're coming back to now. The reason I'm saying that is because there are certain comments, and mainly, you know, we concur with all the comments, but traffic comments are, are the ones that we, we kind of disagree with at this point right now. Our PUD is private, right? So, our variances per se are on the lot size, setbacks. The reason we're, we're providing for individual lots is so that the financing for the end-user can get expanded, and you just don't go conventional. You, you, you're able to apply for FHA, and they'll give you those loans now because you have a set lot, you're getting, you're getting a piece of land with your, with your townhome. That being said, our streets are regular width streets like you would see in a residential neighborhood, the right-ofways as, as well. So, on the traffic comments for the streets are not aligned, everything is, 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 it's really acting more like an apartment complex or a townhome complex. There's going to be gates at the main roads, and then once you get into the complex, you just go into your individual unit. So, the block length being 300 feet, again, it's a private development. That's the whole point of this PUD process. Submitting a TIA, TIA is a Traffic Impact Analysis. If that, I think that comment should have been made a year ago. If we were to require a TIA, now what does a TIA require you? Okay, how much traffic comes out, what you need to do in the extremities of the property and within the master plan. This master plan has been approved for a very, very long time. In fact, this site used to be the site of a 100-acre mall that was going to go there. So, San Isidro Parkway, Springfield Avenue, they're all major, I don't know the specific car. Minor arterials that have two lanes going in each direction and a center turn lane. So, you can't get a bigger road as per the, the code book. So, whether a TIA comes in, we already have max roads. So, if we can kind of, we'd like to request that the traffic comments, you know, be stricken at this point. And again, we've already gone through building permit process. We have all those approvals. If not, we wouldn't be here right now. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I have a question for staff. Is anyone from traffic here?
That's what I was looking for, to see if it's here. As he said, this is a, a private development, so that was my question is, why would, why would these come to here if it's a private development? So, that's what I want to know.
Real quick question, reading some of these, we're, I know back then, when we were in council, were pretty too many hurdles to get to the same place. And we put a hurdle, we jump in, then we come out with other hurdles to get to the same place. And I think I really wish that we would go back and really just look at, at this situation, really doesn't need a permit or doesn't need permission to do something in a closed, private area. Those are just a waste of time, your time, our time, and the people that develop it. So, and so, and then a lot of these things, you see, going back to the same, why are we doing this? So, just to look at, for everyone to know, this, the planning zoning has come a long way. I think just a little more look at, repeating stuff that really doesn't need to be here. It's just a waste of time, and another hurdle shouldn't be, shouldn't be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions in the commission?
Yeah, I do have a question for staff. Can you explain like how normal it is to ask for a TIA at this point in the, in the process and for this type of project?
Well, one thing I could tell you is that a TIA typically is done by text dot. We don't necessarily have an ordinance that requires a TIA, you know? So, as much as it would give some good information for, for the, the traffic department, as far as I'm, I, I know it's not required, we don't have an ordinance that requires it at this time. But it is a tool to be used for big master plans and things of that nature. And so, I could see where, where there was, you know, a request for it, but we, we truly don't have an ordinance to ask for it.
And is there any way that we can get information from someone within the traffic department, like to give us more context on these comments?
I would have to, I would have to talk to traffic and call them or find out what the reasoning is, but to me, it seems like they, they didn't realize this was a private, a private development. I mean, that's what I'm thinking, and that's what I was asking to say, did they, did they know? Because these comments seem to not jive with a private development, you know?
I just personally would feel uncomfortable voting on this if we don't have all the information, it seems like, if, whether, you know, whether it was a mistake or not on their part.
Well, what we can do is, the, this, this has to, well, let me think about this. From here.
Here it goes to preliminary.
They are going to have to come back to preliminary, so we could, we could get with the traffic department and, and discuss this. So, we can, at this point, you're okay with it to stay on here and then at preliminary?
As long as there's some flexibility that if we decide at a certain point that we're not needed, it's not needed. To give you a little more context, you know, TIAs are provided when you start master planning. This master plan has been done for the last 10, 15 years, and it pretty much provides where you're going to put the major roads, where you're going to, so in this corridor here, Antler Crossing, which is just south, doesn't have an access off of San Isidro. There's probably only going to be maybe three or four driveways along San Isidro on the south end. It, it's, it's almost like you're, you're, you're doing the study way after. These two major roads, a traffic study would tell you to put a major road. We already have a major road. Now, you can put deceleration, acceleration links, but like the planning director says, that's on the text dot M where they start asking for that type of parameter. We're not in text dot right-ofway, we're more in city right-ofway, and these meet all the parameters as per the City of Rito Codebook. If we would have to do a traffic study per se, we're talking another three, four month delay. And so, that, that, plus, if there are any changes, we already have a building permit approval. You know, so then we, we'd be, in essence, be starting from, from, you know, stage one, you know, like, like the previous commissioner was stating.
Yeah.
So, he, the engineer will have a chance to?
As, as long as it's just dynamic, we can remove it at some other time.
I don't have, I don't have a problem voting on removing that because the same, we remove it now, if for whatever reason we have to, then at the next one, you could actually go back, but it's probably not going to. So, that's why we give them the green light, so if everything's good, it's, it goes quicker.
And it can come back on if it needs.
And it could, it can, and the opposite way, you know, it's already been passed through us yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
A question real quick, just for the pine. Are, are we doing preliminary, final at the same time, or is it going to be separate, like a normal?
They'll be separate.
It'll be separate? We'll probably see that comment.
If there's no other comments or questions from, from commission, what does the commission wish to do?
I think motion to close, introduce without the part of the traffic part, eliminate it, and look at it when you all sit again. That's mine.
Okay, I have a motion. My commission Garcia?
I'll second that.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. I'm also just going to make comments to the staff. If, if there are comments from particular departments, I just ask if, if somebody from that department can be here to?
We, we do invite them every meeting.
Yeah. We're now moving on to item 6B. Review the consideration, review and consideration of a site plan for the SKG Twin Homes Development located south of San Isidro Parkway and west of Springfield Avenue. Planned unit development, PUD overlay zone for this area established by ordinance number 2022-0-046. The intent is residential twin homes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is SKG Homes 9 LLC. The owner gear of record is Oscar Castillo PE of Beua Consulting LLC. The proposed use is residential twin homes. The zoning for this 120 lot development is R2 PUD, multifamily residential district, planned unit development. General location? Aerial view? Street view? The proposed site plan? Cross-sections? Floor plans? And the consideration? Are these items similar to the first one? Comments from planning? Traffic safety? And the proposed motion?
Thank you. This is public hearing, engineer for record. I let the record show that Commissioner Barone is present.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, staff, Oscar Castillo with Beua Consulting, representing SKG, and just wanted to, we concur with the comments, is a very similar case. We actually went on the same meeting a year ago to get the approval of the PUD. We've been through building permit, we have a building permit, we have these plans, then review by all the departments. And on this one, same thing, I would like to ask for the, you know, for the traffic, the TIA to be, to be removed at this point, and, and here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I just, I do have some questions for staff, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Come, Mr. Chairman.
As far as PUDs? I know he just mentioned that they've been here before, so are we going to consider PUDs like, like a zone case where, you know, they come twice or, or like a, I'm sorry, preliminary plat and final? Or do they submit their documentation, they're okay with the city, and we kind of do like a final review at that point? As far as, because they're pretty, I guess, we don't see PUDs often, but now we are, right? Right? So, so to help, I guess, the process, like now they've come, they've already come once, we're looking at it now, and I don't know, I'm assuming once they bring in their preliminary plat, does this come back again as a, as a whole, or is it just separating both things? Yeah, so that's a very good question, because we were, we were discussing this, and when it goes to the one-stop shop, there, it, we're trying to do it to where it only goes once for review and not, not twice for review, because right now it's going twice. But the first time it's going, what, what we're wanting to catch is on the design, will it work? Will, will the design work when it comes to utilities and stuff like that? That's all we're trying to get, because they're putting in smaller lots, they might change setbacks or anything. Will it, will it work with what they're trying to do? We don't want a, a delay to where it's going to stay in there forever, because that, we just want to know that the concept would work, right? And then we can, we can move on. But what we're finding is that it's become where they take it for preliminary, and then it's, it's reviewed like a preliminary, and then I'm afraid that it's going to go around the second time, and they're going to hit it hard again, you know? So, we're, that's not what we wanted with the first step. The first step was just getting with utilities, and will this work? Will, will, where they want to put their meters, will that work? Basic stuff. But we had a meeting with engineering to discuss this, so that we can kind of streamline it a little bit more, because in essence, what's happening is they're going to, to review twice. Right? And like Commissioner Garcia was saying, you know, then you, you check it once, you give all these hurdles, then they fix all that, and they come a second time, they're given a bunch of new ones, and it's just, it, it makes it difficult for them. So, we're trying to streamline it to where they can go one time, and, or, that first time they go, it's not, it's not the, the full-blown review, it's just to make sure that concept would work, right? And I would understand also for us to see it once, at least to be able to provide some comments, and then again, that that's been taken care of, whatever kinds have been given. And this is actually a new, excuse me, this is an ordinance that came in 2019, and honestly, this is, I think Beua is the, the first, the first engineer to actually submit under the new ordinance. And so, yeah, we've gone around and round on this, on this issue. The other comment that I was looking at, Mr. Navarro, was the parkland on both, right? As far as parkland comment, and I know it kind of mentions like 50% of, of what the, the park would have, the cost of that versus, you know, actually putting in what, what they're saying based on the number of dwellings, right? The formula of that. So, I'm assuming both of these applicants were saying we'll, we'll probably end up doing the, the money instead of the actual development of, of, of park space. And then if they are, right, if someone were to do that, then like, for example, these two PUDs are right across a park, Divine, I think it's called, Divine Mercy. So, would, would those funds be able to be specifically designated for, for that park since that park's right across the street? And can we put that as a comment within the PUD that the funds that are, that are, that if they were going to be giving park funds, that those be utilized for improvement specifically for that park? So, when this, when this ordinance came through, they required that there be park space in the PUD, and it did not give an option for cash. And because we do have an ordinance that allows for cash, and there's a distance requirement, so if, if this was the case, yes, Divine Mercy would be the park that's nearest. You would think, because they're going to walk across the street and utilize that park. And if, and if they don't have the space within their own planned unit development, especially if we're adding, my point is we're adding a lot of density to this area, right? Unfortunately, there is a park nearby for someone, for these individuals to utilize, right? But I think the first thing would try to find a common area for everybody to utilize, right, within its own development. But if they're not, then use those improvements for the park that's nearest them. Right. And, and, and the only, the other thing is, I was, maybe we reconsider or look at or make a recommendation as far as to look at the, the funding that, that is being looked at. I know, I think that's something else that should be considered too, as far as. The funding? The, the amount, I think it's at $35,000 or something like that? Yes. Per acre, right? The north, an acre's not $35,000. That's been discussed. That's $200,000. Park, we have our parks planner here today. Different areas of town, you know, the price of an acre is different. That's correct. So, we're, we're, right now, the way the ordinance stands is they have to have a park in their PUD, right? I would, we, we were talking about this in hopes that maybe we can adjust that, bring it back to create that option, that if parks deems it that they would rather have the cash to go into the regional park, that that option's available, because it works both ways. It gives the developer to put a little bit more, you know, more units, and then they don't have to have a pocket park in, in their area. And if it, if it ends up being the city's pocket park, then we have to go service it and things of that nature. So, we, we're probably going to come back with some kind of option, so that that option's available to the parks department, so that they can make that determination. But I do know that we are sending these PUDs over to parks, and, and our parks planner, Ms. Carrera, is going to talk to them about that kind of design. But I, I, I know where you're going with that, and I think you're right. We, we need to bring back the ordinance and adjust it, so it keeps that, that option available for the developer. Right. Agreed.
It's real quick question, is there, is there any language where if you're closer to a, these bigger parks that are being built everywhere, you know, where it used to be these little parks, now you have these massive parks that you don't have to require people that are building subdivisions to have a park within there, because you're walking distance from the bigger park? That gives some lea, that gives leeway? Because we're always, you know, at the smaller parts, they wonder being, people are, are going and doing damage there, and it's just a lot of little things that you have to take care and pay, the tactors need to come back and pay and all this, where you have the bigger park, where you don't hear that much going on, because there's so many people at those parks, that you eliminate that within the smaller areas that are being developed.
Elizabeth Carrera, Parks Planner. What was your question?
So, he's asking about the, the ordinance that allows for monies to be put towards the regional parks instead of creating a pocket park?
Yes.
And the, the process that they would go through. You can go to that other mic.
Well, this, this is a very interesting neighborhood, because there's been some feedback between the neighbors and the very wide road that is Springfield Road, because it's five lanes. So, we're currently making a way for people to cross, but that is a concern. So, if they want to build a pocket park, we have ample room for them to have an HOA park if they want to have an HOA park, because, you know, in some of these neighborhoods up north, HOAs are really common, so we allow for that. So, it's up to them.
It's not, it's not an option, if, if it's allowed for that, is, is it not better to force them to, you know, for the bigger parks than actually doing the little, the little pocket parks?
It just depends. It just depends on the area, and it doesn't mean that we won't take, many parks, it's just that we don't, some of the small parks, HOA parks, we don't accept them in our park system. We let people have their own small HOA parks when they don't fit in our size limit. So, we prefer bigger parks now, because those small parks are maintenance issues.
Right, that, that's the whole.
But HOA parks can be small.
But specifically this park, the, the Divine Mercy part, I know there's a new development, I guess, on this other side of, what is it? On the other side of Springfield, closer to 35, that whole new subdivision. I know there are quite a few folks from that neighborhood that are crossing that street to get to that park, and it, and it seems like a really nice park. I don't know if there's been more improvements to it. I know there's a basketball court, I know there's football fields now, and I know the soccer field's being utilized, right?
They're being built, yes.
And then I know they're clearing out some area in that area too, I guess, south of, I don't know if it's the city's doing it or who's doing it, but my, my point was if there's, we're adding, I don't know how many homes in these both developments, quite a few dwelling units now condensed, and there's no park within this development, and more than likely, if I live there and I want to get some fresh air, walk my dog, I'm going to go to Divine Mercy and take a stroll. So, my point was if, if they, if they don't provide the space that's needed within this park, can we utilize that money and use it for that park, since that's the park that's going to be getting the impact of this development?
Oh, yes, yes, but the whole thing with, it's, it's a PUD, and they're supposed to have a higher standard of development, so that's like the whole purpose of a PUD.
Right. But right now, currently, I think the ordinance allows them, instead of having to provide the space within the development, they can.
Oh, yes, if, if they want to, but I'll, I'll let you guys decide that.
Right.
If they want to do a small HOA park, or if they want to give the money to Divine Mercy, whatever fits for them, because they're ultimately the one that has to decide with their money if they want to do the fee, or if they want to invest in their own site.
Okay. Well, I guess it's something to consider, I know it's got a lot on agenda, but is there something we can have and look at? Again, closer? We just got to make sure we comply with the PUD ordinance, and like Elizabeth said, you know, they're, they're getting a trade-off of more density, now we just got to make sure that we get them to comply.
And I just want to add a comment to that, is that I think it really does depend on the exact location, right? Divine Mercy might be very close, but to cross the street with dogs or children, or every time you need to go outside, I think it's very dangerous, and, you know, something like Springfield or even San Isidro, so I think it's something to, it's like a case by case, right?
Correct. And, and there is an ordinance stance for Commissioner Garcia's question. When it comes to subdivisions, regular subdivision, there is that option, you know, to, to do it regional, to do it, and they, and the engineers know, and the developers know, they go to parks, and they, they work that out. This is a PUD, so this has, this is a little bit different than a regular subdivision ordinance. That's why I would like to see if we can consider putting, putting that verbiage in this ordinance, so that they have that option. But at this date, right now, they need to provide a plan.
Thank you. Just another questions from commission, for the wishes of the commission.
I would like to make a motion to approve, subject to the comments.
One second.
The same thing for the TIA.
I believe the engineer wanted to request to remove traffic comments, if that's your wish on your motion.
And just to confirm, Mr. Navarro, it would be the same where it could come up again in preliminary, once we got?
Yeah, they're going to, they're, they're going to get another chance to. Yeah, they're gonna, they're, they're going to get another chance to visit with the traffic department, so they can discuss it.
It still, it still has to come back with a plat approval, so if this issue will have to be addressed.
Okay, so.
I pull my second, that way you can read.
Yes, motion to approve, subject to the comments, and amending to remove the traffic safety comment number two.
I second that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now moving on to review and consideration of following master plan. Item 7A, review of the revision of the Celito Lindo master plan, the tenants residential, commercial, and institutional. The purpose of this revision is to reconfigure phases and realign streets.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant Celito Lindo, engineers Howland Engineering and Servin, proposed uses residential, commercial, and institutional. The zoning for this 560 lot development is R1A, R1B, R1MH, R2B1 and B3. Location view? Area view? Master plan? Comments from planning? Comments from fire, traffic safety? Parks? And the proposed motion?
Thank you. Engineer record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Miguel Jimenez, and Commissioner Miguel Jimenez with Howland Engineering, uh, here representing our client. We, I do, I, I, we went over the comments and I, I would like to bring up some comments that we're not in agreement with, we want clarification. Two of them are one from, comment number one from planning and, which is pretty much the same as comment number eight from traffic, is Ahido, the right of way of Ahido. It currently is a 90-foot right of way and Ahido has an existing 90-foot right of way for, for miles going north. However, if I show the master plan, we're pretty tight. The comment states that in the, in the thoroughfare plan, the future thoroughfare plan, it, it causes Ahido to be anywhere from 100 to 120 foot right of way, right? But we do have an issue here. We're, we're tied up in this area. This area is developed to, to, and to the right, to the east, we have a ditch that needs to go there with detention. And actually, the owner, right, of Celito Lindo has sold this track here, so we're, we're kind of landlocked in this area. And just the, the depth and the width of these commercial lots, right, it's, it's, it's getting, it's getting caught in the middle where it's going to be very hard to develop, uh, you know, to develop commercially. So we'd like to, I guess, strike that comment, we'd like to request to strike that comment at this time and just find, uh, to be able to meet with traffic and planning and find a, a, a good location to make that, uh, that expansion, right, to taper that road off. Instead of just, because right now Ahido comes up to this intersection right, right here, right? So we, we'd like to be able to discuss that as we develop that area. The other comment I'd like to bring up is also traffic comment number five states that the block length is 300 feet and that some of our streets are close, too close to each other. I can't identify those. I, I was kind of wishing someone was here so we can discuss it, but I can't identify those. I don't see any that are closer than 300 feet, so I'd like to strike that comment off. And just again, during the one-stop shop process, coordinate with them. And then the, the TIA, we also have a comment for the TIA, like my colleague mentioned earlier, this, this master plan is, is a, is a very, is a very old master plan, right, that we're just bringing in as, because we're developing the, the last pending phases. And the major roads, the principal roads are in Celito Lindo, Ahido, St. Luke. And, and we're making connections between those for, for, for better circulation, right? Like, like, like I was mentioning before, a TIA is going to pretty much require or, or, or recommend these big roads that are already in place. So we'd like to address that in the one-stop shop too and just coordinate there, but I, I liked it for them to be stricken off at this point.
I, I'm looking at, excuse me, let's go ahead. I didn't understand what you were saying about the width of, of the road because that's Almonte right now. Ain't it Almonte? South, uh, Ahido, from, from the point where you're talking about going south?
Right.
Uh, that's Almonte, isn't it? There's not, there's no, uh, there's nothing that's in the way of, of widening the street.
Well, I mean, just, just based on the master plan, right, and the residential areas and, and we have this ditch, this ditch is pretty much set, right? This, this, this one's existing. And this track, this track over here is, is sold and, and obviously we have the school here. So though, I mean, we are caught there. What, what part are you saying that it's not?
Oh, I thought you said that.
South of St. Luke.
South of, yeah, south of St. Luke.
Yes, that's.
That you have some constraints, but there's, there's nothing out there.
Right, but it, I mean, this, this subdivision here is actually either under construction or, or constructed. I'm not sure what point, if we can bring up an area.
I think Mr. Navarro is mentioning south of Ahido is still not developed, or still not built.
Yes.
So I believe he's, he's mentioning this road is still not built yet at the moment. So that's, that's a portion that they're, we're trying to modify as in the Ahido Avenue being the width of it.
Yes, exactly, but at, at that point, I, it's not built yet, but to the west, the residential is, right? And we have the school to the east and that ditch in, in the east, so it's caught between those two tracks that are existing. And, and once we do that, I mean, there's, I mean, it, it, it's going to hurt us, an additional 40 feet of right of way, right? Which probably the, the pavement width is going to stay the same, it's literally just right of way. It, it would hurt, it would hurt the developer, it hurt the development of those, of that property there.
What's the current, the current size of Ahido right now, north of St. Luke?
It's 90 foot. It's a 90 foot right of way.
I mean, I, I, we should have asked for that when that was built, right? But south of it, I'm assuming that the future development of the south to carry traffic to this area would, would be the reason for that, for needing that, that right of way.
Right, and we're not against, you know, making that taper at one point, we just want to be able to coordinate that as we get closer and we look into this area a little deeper. Uh, maybe, because I know like, like this area is going to be a little tighter than, than down here, you get me, there's more room for adjustment down here, but just right here gets, I mean, we just want to be able to sit down and, and coordinate that with them a little closer.
Well, I'm just, I'd like to leave the comments so that we have that opportunity to keep on, because if they take it off, then it could be construed as, you know, oh, PMZ took it off, so I don't have to negotiate. I, because it's, you know, they struck the item. So we can leave it on there just so that we can sit down and visit and see what you're talking about as far as obstacles that, that hurt the situation. Because I, I don't see it, so we have to talk about it and, and see.
Yeah, no, as long as we can keep, I mean, coordinating, I mean, that's, that's, that's our view, that's who we would prefer, but again, yes, we, we see that.
Orley, what's the, what size of Celito Lindo north, I'm sorry, north of Celito Lindo? Ahido? Or Ahido? I believe it's a 90.
Awesome.
What was that? Ahido north of, of Celito Lindo?
Yes, it's 90 for, for, for a really long while. I mean, I, I honestly don't know where it opens up to 120, it's, and it, you know, and we are coming in with a revision, but I mean, it, this, this master plan was always approved as a 90-foot right of way for Ahido. Where, where, where things change, right?
So, yeah, so one of the things that happened, that this, this happens often with master plans, not just with this one, and when you, you know, you start changing around alignments of certain roadways and you start changing languages, you start losing your vested rights. That's kind of, it's kind of the situation also, you're stuck in here, or because of you making these modifications and bringing it back, the right of way to the former thoroughfare plan requires the 120, so.
Are there any other questions from the commission?
Um, the, the only question I had was, I know within the comments there's pretty much, um, the only section left or the area that's left to continue to develop for this master plan is the commercial side of it along the loop, right? On, on both sides. That, that, that's the area that now pretty, on the outside of the loop and, and whatever's left here.
Yes, correct, yes, and, yes, to the, going south.
Going south, that, this is pretty much the, the, the area left to develop.
Yes, yeah.
And, and then you have Celito Lindo connecting currently to, to the loop. Now we, we're going to have, within this master plan, St. Luke Boulevard going to the loop, right?
Correct.
I don't know if it was here or somewhere, I'd heard that the Tech dot wasn't going to allow that connection to, I don't know if that's still the case or not, or.
Well, we're actually, in coordination, we made preliminary contact with Tech dot. We're looking at the possibility of, of trying to fit a, a, a way to where we go or north, right, and may be able to U-turn back and be able to get on the loop. So it'd be like a, yeah, a ride in and be able to go left out.
But, but as of now, do you know if, if that, that connection is still something that Tech dot is, is considering and looking at for this?
They were open to the discussion, yeah, it wasn't like a complete no.
Okay, all right. That, that was my only question, because the last time I think we had seen this master plan, I, I'd heard the discussion wasn't, that it wasn't going to be.
Right.
Or I don't know if there's issues with creek there, is there something, uh, as far as flood plain there, is there, there anything in there between, I guess, um, that, that multifamily, I guess, commercial stuff along St. Luke, to the, the connection to the loop? There's a, there's a bridge there that starts, I don't know if it starts right at the gray or, on your picture, it would be the pink, right by the lake. I guess where the purple is, is there, are they, I don't know, I'm trying to remember why, but I remember there's, I don't know if there's issues there with that as well as Tech dot with the connection to the loop, but I guess you guys will square all that.
Yeah, like I said, yeah, we're, we're in those discussions to trying to see if that's possible. I know at one point we did look into having a, a turnaround underneath the bridge as well, but that was kind of ruled out. We weren't able to, you know, try to, you know, to, to accomplish that, but we are looking into having, you know, that road be able to come back up and, like, again, try to make that loop.
And within the master, you know, at what point that, that roadway would come in?
Excuse me?
Do you know at what point during the, these phases would that roadway come in?
This road or?
You're saying looped connection?
Um, it's, it's not that far out right now, and another reason why we're submitting the revisions is because there's interest in this area, right, this property right here. So shortly after this comes in, you know, this part would be next, right? I say that, I mean, but, I mean, just, it, it, it can go either way, right? But I don't, I don't see it too far from now.
Just, just because it would really help those schools out, get traffic out as well?
Exactly.
And, and the sooner we can get that roadway, the better. I would recommend that, that, that would happen, just to, you know, overall traffic get east to west.
Right, and that's why we kind of put it back, because I, I know we weren't going to have it, we're finding a way where it's just going to be like a dead end, but I mean, it does allow for better circulation, so yes, I agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are other questions from commission, what, other wish of the commission? Is there a motion, any, any action on this item? Other commission?
Close the recommendation? No, close the, uh, the recommendation, right?
Okay, so, motion from Commissioner Garcia? I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now moving on to item 7B, review and consideration of San Pedro Ranch master plan, the tenants residential, commercial, and institutional.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is San Pedro Ranch, engineers crane engineering, proposed uses residential, commercial, and institutional. The zoning for this 41-phase development is M1 and a portion is located in the ETJ. Location view? Area view? The proposed master plan? Comments from planning? Fire, traffic safety? Parks? And the proposed motion?
Thank you. Who's going to speak on?
To you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, Edward Garcia here with Crane Engineering on behalf of the developer. Tonight, we're presenting to you a, a new master plan and also a phase one plat, which will be the next item, I think, on the agenda. This master plan is, and for the record, we do support a TIA on this one. Because this is a fine example why you would want a TIA in this application. We have 1,400 acres, new development, this is the first time we come before Plan and Zoning Commission. It does abut to a highway right of way in the state of Texas. This is a fine example why a TIA would be needed. And so we're already working and scheduling meetings with, with Tech dot on this. We've reviewed the comments and basically what we're doing here is, this is a long-range master plan of, of a multi-phase project that can sustain development maybe over the next 50 years. What's going to drive it though, is going to be the Tech dot right of way that we're showing on the master plan. This Tech dot right of way that's shown currently is one of the alternative routes that Tech dot has studied, but is not currently designing as we speak. They're currently in schematic design only from US 83 to Manganahine Road. However, if bridge number five takes off like we all think it might, it'll then promote the, the momentum to move this, this design schematic further beyond to the north. And so what we're doing here is we're just providing this option for Tech dot, because this is, this is on their radar. And so we'll be continually having meetings with them, and that's for that reason, we developed this master plan in phases without a detailed lot layout, because we know that as Tech dot moves forward, our lot layout's going to change. And so in discussions with the planning department on comment number six under planning, you know, and when you develop master plans, you're required to do a lot layout. Of course, something like this at 1,400 acres, you're talking about something to the, to the tune of about 4,400 single-family lots. And so to, to develop a lot layout of that magnitude, you're talking about a, you know, spending quite a bit of time and effort, when in fact the master plan's going to probably change about 10 more times. And so for that reason, we had a meeting, uh, discussion this week with the planning department to develop a methodology in which we can, we can develop a lot count. And that methodology would be utilizing existing developments that our firm has developed in the, in the city, not to mention who other firms have done development as well. And to arrive at a zoning, a zoning, a zoning situation where we can develop a lot count and that's, we believe that's a good tool for planning at this point. From that method, then we can estimate water and wastewater sewer demand and water demand, which will be a requirement for our phase one one-stop shops in the middle down the road. And so we're asking, we did, we did meet with the planning department on item number six, we did come to some agreement, we've already submitted a correspondence letter to that effect to support that. On item comment number eight for planning, we're asking to remove that comment because we don't, it's not necessary at this point to do a zone change. The current zone for phase one that will be presented here is M1, which allows a commercial development under the code. As the rest of the property that's, that's shown to you on the master plan still has to go through annexation, and at that time is when we will develop zoning for that annexations and go through the city process. And we'll be, we'll be developing that as we develop into phase two. And so, uh, so right now a zone change is really not required at this moment for the current master plan is presented to you, but it will be in the future as we develop this, this master plan further in more detail beyond phase one. When it comes to other comments on the, on the master plan, we agree, we did, we did speak with the traffic director, there are several comments on this, on his, on his list. There's some redundancy in there on, on comments number three and four, uh, but instead of trying to request the removal of that, we did agree that as we're, as we're moving forward in the master plan of this project and the development over time, that we would, we would, we would work to derive and develop a solution for these items because there's a lot of work to be done. And right now what we're asking tonight is, is, is we're presenting this master plan for your consideration, and so we're not, we're not asking for any removal of these comments on the traffic because we know we're going to work through them, and this is where the TIA, for example, will address those comments. A TIA in this regard will, will, would be a, a very valuable tool, not just for Tech dot to permit our, our, our road connections, but also for the city and us to make better planning decisions going forward. So with that, I'd like to request the removal of planning comment number eight, and with the clarification of planning comment number six, and I'm open for any questions you might have.
Um, so, so the communication does mention the M1, is, is that the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. The, the M1 would be within the phase one of this master plan?
Yes, sir.
And currently that would be the only thing that would be considered at this point? Any future development it would, it would start off?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And then, um, because the current master plan or the proposed master plan really doesn't show any other manufacturing use as far as what's identified within it, right, within these phases as far as colors? We have single-family, commercial, unless the commercial area would kind of be, if you were to add additional M1s in the future?
It could morph into that based on what the TechSoft's gonna do with the outer loop. But right now it's too early to say that. So currently we're identifying that as a commercial zone. But in speaking with the initial planning for this development with the developer, it's not their goal currently to go manufacturing.
Right, you're looking a little bit more into multifamily, single-family use?
Yes, sir.
Commercial use for the future?
Yes, sir.
And then the, any park space within this, or those would be, I guess, those green spaces?
Yeah, basically in our master plan, what we have is, we have different green belts that we're establishing, not just floodplain, but other areas that can be complemented based on the different single-family zones that we have. So we currently, under the current master plan, have about ninety-two acres of green belt proposed. And if we do, and we did some, I did some math while I was waiting to speak, and based on forty-four hundred lots and a thousand apartments, we would need about fifty-five acres of park. So we currently are exceeding that in our initial master plan submiddle. And what drives this park also development is the natural topography. The land is beautiful, it has so much potential. And we want to capitalize on the topography itself and take advantage of all the tanks that the developer has developed over time to feed the cows. And we want to turn those into amenities.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
A question for staff. In terms of the ETJ and the future annexation related to this land, are there any concerns in terms of utilities? Or is it kind of like, you know, reaching out into the annexation?
Well, there's always, when you're talking about utilities and annexation, we work closely with the Utilities Department because this is stretching out there. This is getting further out. And that's always an issue. And that issue is engineers get with the Utilities Department and they kind of work out those concerns. There are some concerns bringing a line out that doesn't loop, because then you have flood, you have to flush it. It might get stagnant, I guess you'd say, and so, utilities works with the engineers to try to loop the water lines. So those are issues that do come up, but at this time, I don't think he's master planning, I mean, excuse me, annexing anything at this time. But they will be coming in to talk to the city to see if potentially it can be annexed. Now, they have to be connected to city limits, which they are. So they can come in, but I think they're just gonna wait.
I can add to that if I may. So this property was also a part of the oversizing portion of the Colonia project that the city took on from nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and four. There's a sixteen-inch water line that was designed and installed by the city along the north side of the highway right away. This particular property purchased LUEs and entered into a twenty-five-year agreement with the city of Laredo. That agreement expires in twenty twenty-eight. And so the first phase is more than sufficient for us to have adequate LUEs. We have about ninety-six LUEs. The first phase is only gonna take up not even one-third of that. So we'll have some additional LUEs to be able to at least go into Phase Two. However, if you look at the master plan, you also see that there's an elevated storage tank site that we're already kind of pre-thinking and pre-programming based on contours, you know, you don't have to really be an engineer to know that. But we want to take advantage of the fact that we understand that there's a big demand going forward for the future. The city of Laredo has a master plan currently out filed on their website. And what they're showing on the water extension right now is they're showing a twelve-inch water line extension from basically the landfill to this area. Obviously, with a project of this magnitude, that twelve-inch line will have to be upgraded. This is how we start planning together, not just as a developer, as a developer, but with the city. And at the same time, we also try to encourage other landowners along that alignment to join forces. So that way, everybody wins. And so that's basically what we're doing. But for Phase One, we plan to tie into that sixteen-inch water line by having to bore on the highway. We'll be tying into that. So the maximum pipe that we can install is a sixteen-inch diameter. That's the max we can go. So that's what we're gonna do. And then we also have to tie in sewer. And there's sewer in the area to the north. There's a lip station and a gravity sewer to the north in a platted area. So our immediate plan, disregard for water and wastewater, is to tie into those facilities. But at the same time, we have to plan for the future.
I just have a quick question for staff. Now, the future land use plan, does it extend out into the ETJ? And if so, would it, did you use that as a guide, or would you use for this master plan?
Yes, we reviewed all the current master plans for thoroughfare and so on.
Yeah.
Because basically all we're presenting to you tonight on our roadway system are just the major thoroughfares.
Right.
That's all we're showing, because we know we're gonna be expanding that.
And these were identified in the future thoroughfare plan?
And it is our goal to annex this property ultimately as we go into the city limits.
And then again, I guess staff have, I know we had talked about taking another look at the future land use plan, just based on, I know you mentioned the bridge. I know we had some changes on the south, and that we're not residential and not looking at commercial.
Columbia also.
Yeah, because if the outer loop doesn't happen here, then we're obviously gonna come back to you again with another master plan.
Mr. Chairman, as far as comment number eight in the planning, we're okay with that one. Number six, I do understand what he's talking about. We're gonna have to get with utilities, because I think between utilities, the engineer, and ourselves, we can come up with the math that's needed to talk about the impact that this master plan would have on the system. I think we can leave it there, but I do understand where the engineer's coming from. And we have to get with the Director of Utilities.
Yeah, the buzzword tonight was flexibility, I think I've heard that a few times.
You heard that?
So, yeah, as long as we're flexible, we're good.
Fourteen hundred acres.
We understand.
It's a lot.
Thank you.
I have another question for Mr. Navarro. Can you explain the process to me of, like, why this master plan is coming up now before the annexation happens?
So, they're not sure yet, and I might be speaking for the landowner, but with all the talk about the bridge coming in and possibly running through their property, the first step is to hire an engineer and come up with a master plan and apply the roadways just to kind of get an idea of what they can do with their land. That's what they're doing right now. And there's a cost to that, but like you said, it could tweak, it could change depending on what happens. Maybe the bridge doesn't happen, maybe the road alignment's gonna change. Maybe the alignment goes out further out. Now it's not gonna go through their property, they're gonna have to change. But they put it there so that the discussion can be had, so that the engineer and the developers have something to discuss with TechSoft, with the city. Help me out here if you want.
Yes.
And so then, and then beyond that, beyond that, once you get into annexation, you know, you're getting to the point where you're starting to develop. Right? But you gotta come up with a master plan first and develop the idea of what you want to do. Because like we talked about M1, maybe M1, maybe residential, they don't know yet, but they're interested in getting started, so they start off with a master plan, that's where it all begins. And then later on, when they're a little bit more sure of what's gonna happen, then they'll annex, and then they'll start bringing in phases and they'll start developing. But the first step is to just look at the land. The engineer needs to look at it from the contours. He has to see where the, if there's floodplain, he's gotta work on that. There's a lot of areas that the engineers look at before they even get going.
Yeah, but to add to the answer, if I may.
That wasn't right.
It was right. It was right.
But my answer's gonna be black and white.
We're planning Phase One.
Phase One, yeah.
And Phase One's in the city limits.
Yeah, within city limits.
Therefore, you don't need to annex to plat Phase One. However, to plat Phase One by city ordinance, we have to provide a master plan for all the land owned by the developer.
Oh, I see, okay.
And for that reason, we're talking about the master plan tonight.
I was gonna say that. Well, that is black and white, but I'm thinking more.
But that'll be probably Phase Three, right? Or Phase Two?
For what, for annexation? Yes, the way we see it, the way some of the vision here is basically annexing everything north of the outer loop on the master, that's basically the thought. We'll start with that, you know, and work our way.
I was trying to give the engineer some props, like they do a lot, but apparently not.
So Phase One, your question?
Yes.
And Phase One will happen within, you know, next year?
It'll happen within the frontage, yes. Because here's the, what's happening is TechSoft is currently redesigning and widening Highway Three to Nine. So they're on final design. And so this is what's driving this Phase One. What we want to do is we want to not, we want to work with TechSoft while they're constructing. We want to construct our Phase One. And we want to have our main access point at the same time, install all our utilities at the same time, so that way we're not tearing up all their work later. That's what's driving this plat tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no questions? What, with the Commission, I'd like to do with item seventy.
Mostly to close, I'm gonna introduce without number eight and number six. I recommend the rest.
Second.
So let me just clarify, you want to remove item six as well?
Six, yes, six and eight.
Okay.
It's a long time for that back.
So we have a motion, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We're now moving on to consideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Item AA, preliminary consideration of the plat of San Pedro Ranch, Phase One, the intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Applicant is San Pedro, engineers crane engineering, proposes is commercial, and the zoning for this seven-lot development is M1. Area view. Street view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning, fire, traffic safety, and parks. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission and staff. Alfredo Martinez with Crane Engineering on behalf of the developer. So as discussed during the master plan discussion, we concur with most of the comments, but we would like to ask for your approval with the removal of comment number one under planning, which discusses that zone change that isn't required. And in addition to that comment, what we would like to be removed is comment number one under parks and leisure, which we've already discussed this with planning and with the Parks Department via email. And they were okay with removing that from this phase of the development.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission?
You're saying you received an email from Parks?
Yes.
You're okay.
And Parks is okay with removing item, that item? Yes? If there's no questions, I wish to the Commission.
Motion to close and introduce with the removing of the planning number one and in park number one.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight B, preliminary consideration of the plat of Cilitolindo, carmsa division, Phase Ten B, the intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant is Cilitolindo, engineers howland engineering. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one-lot development is B1. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Traffic safety and proposed motion.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Miguel Jimenez with Howland Engineering, and here to answer any questions, but we concur with staff comments and all of their comments.
Thank you.
One question, Mr. Chairman. Can you expand on the traffic safety's comment? On the name carm?
Is that a question for?
Yes.
What was that, I'm sorry?
For traffic safety's comment, if you can expand on that.
Oh, why is it called carm?
Yeah, or why are they asking that?
I'm not sure, I mean, I also, I mean, that was just, I think it has to do with one of the previous owners or partners when this track was being bought. We are gonna include that name as part of the master plan. I think that was one of the comments on the master plan. So, yeah, it was just a name that was chosen way before my time, too.
Do you have an answer, Ruth?
No, it was just a little clarification on the master plan. Back in twenty twenty, they put Cilitolindo carm master plan, and then it was brought back with Cilitolindo master plan.
Right.
And then these phases are carm subdivision. So there's like a little bit, there's no consistency as to what the master plan is called or the phases of the subdivision.
Yes, so when we submit the revisions for the master plan, we are gonna be consistent with the name, and we're gonna leave the name carm on it. So then the rest of the subdivisions will have that consistency.
Thank you. If there's no other questions by the Commission, let's wish to the Commission. Hold on. Are we? Are we, yeah, we're fine.
Yeah. Oh, a motion to close and introduce as a?
So the comments, have a motion by Commissioner Garcia?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight C, preliminary consideration of the plat of Cilitolindo, carmsa division, Phase Nine, the intent is commercial.
Applicant is Cilitolindo, engineers Howland engineering. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this two-lot development is B1. Location view. Area view. Street view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. Traffic safety and the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Once again, for the record, Miguel Jimenez with Howland Engineering, and we concur with all comments.
Thank you.
Motion to close and introduce.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Yes, a motion approved by Commissioner Portillo in a second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now moving on to item eight D, preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot One, Block One, San Isidro, northeast corner retail plat into lots One A, One B, One C, One D, and One E, Block One, San Isidro northeast corner retail plat. The intent is commercial. The purpose of this replat is to add additional acreage and reconfigure one lot into five lots.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is San Isidro northeast, engineer is Slay Engineering. The proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this five-lot development is B4. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. The plat and the replat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, my name is Ramiro Barra. I work for Slay Engineering, and I'm here representing my client. And we concur with the comments, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Commission?
Motion to close and introduce as approved, recommended.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight E, preliminary consideration of the replat of the east eighteen point fifty-two of Block Four and west of eighteen point fifty-two of Block Five, Block Seventy-Nine, western division to Lot Five A, Block Seventy-Nine, western division, the intent is residential.
For the record, applicant is Felipe Ramirez, engineers Victor J. Higuitares, Savio Engineering. Proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this one-lot development is R3. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. Jonathan Vasquez Garcia from Sabio Engineering, we concur with staff comments and I'm here for any questions or concerns.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 8F, preliminary consideration of the replat of lot one, block one, Weatherford subdivision, phase one into lot 1A, block one, Weatherford subdivision, phase one, the intent is industrial.
For the record, applicant is Land Deco Transload Services, engineers Francisco Ramos, proposed use is industrial and the zoning for this ten lot development is M1 and R1A. Location view? Area view? The plat and the replat, the proposed replat? Comments from planning? Parks and leisure? And the proposed motion?
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Staff.
Frank Ramos with Ramos Engineering. We read the comments and we agree, we concur with all the, without comments, so if you guys have any questions, any comments, we'll get answered.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Any questions from the Commission?
Motion to close, 8F, recommended, recommended by the, a second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 8G, preliminary consideration of the replat of lot 29D, five acres subdivision into lot 29A and lot 29B, D5 acre subdivision, the intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant is Flora Rochan, engineers Francisco Ramos, proposed use is residential, the zoning for this two lot development is not applicable as it is located in the ETJ. Location view? Area view? Street view? The proposed replat? Comments from planning? Parks and leisure? And the proposed motion?
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, staff, one more time. Frank Ramos, Ramos Engineering, read through all the comments and we agree, we concur with all the, all the comments on there, if you guys have any questions, we'll get answered.
Thank you.
Quick to staff, can you explain to me number 10?
So, so this particular subdivision is within one of the coves, is on the D5 acres?
Uh huh.
And this, in this plat?
They're gonna have to get approval from the city as well as from the county. Where the differences are is that the setbacks that the county has are 10, 10 on the front, five on each side, and five in the rear. Because there is no zoning, our setbacks don't apply in that particular area. Upon this time, the, the area would be annexed, then the more stringent, which would be ours, would apply.
Okay. I wouldn't show that. We can't vote on it yet. No, you. Thank you. Coffee break. We're just waiting for Commissioner Garcia to make form for action.
For the record, we lost two Commissioners that, so we lost forum, so we're waiting for them to come back. And I'm saying this because we, at our office, Rosie reviews this, and she's gonna say, what's going on, so.
You wait for me?
Yes. That's okay.
It's all good. It's all good.
Okay, we now have a forum. So may I have a motion for action on this item?
My, my motion wants to, oh, the way the motion, to close and introduce as is.
Okay, I have a motion. I'll second that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item 8H, preliminary consideration of the plat of the coves at Winfield, phase 7C, and the granting of the variances to reduce the distance between the street jog of center lines from 300 linear feet to 131.22 linear feet and to increase the 500-foot threshold for a dead end street from the five, from 500 feet to 735.33 feet for the proposed street excellence way, and from 500 feet to 868.74, 74 feet for the proposed street dignity circle. The tent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant is Kilam Development, engineers Mesquite Engineering, the proposed use is residential and the zoning for this 66 lot development is R1. Location view? Area view? Street view? The proposed plat? Comments from planning? Fire, traffic safety? Parks? And the proposed motion?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, staff. So we concur with all comments issued, however, we do have, we submitted two variances for comments for planning on comment number one and comment number two. Those, those, you have seen them, the variances were requested, and after being, having conversations and back and forth meetings with, with planning, we decided to request the variance and for, for the, the dead end streets and as well as the street jogs. I know it's Ro, Ro, Morales, I know with Kilam Development. Here for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do have a question. Is that Mr. Morales?
Mr. Morales.
Mr. Morales. I would just like more information on, on, to justify the variances, why you're looking to reduce especially the, the street jog center lines.
For the record, Hugo Secca with Kilam Development and Mesquite Engineering. This goes with the presentation made two meetings ago, that Dr. Rolando Ortiz was here. He explained that we're trying to use a different concept of development and subdivision, which is a coving system, and this goes in hand with, with those things. I know as for the, for the length of the cul-de-sacs, these, these cul-de-sacs are per se not dead end cul-de-sacs because we don't, we don't provide continuity at the end of them because we have pedestrian walkways that will connect with existing streets that in case of an emergency, the vehicles will be able to access these areas if there, if something happens at the beginning of these cul-de-sacs. And also, at the, at these cul-de-sacs are not your typical cul-de-sacs where you have just pavement in the middle of it. We provide islands that some are as big, that can have, you know, some sort of attention or, or green space, and we provide one-way turnaround so the continuity is there. And, and the, the, the minimum diameter for those cul-de-sacs will be met, and that's one of the comments from traffic, so we, we, we wouldn't have any issue with that. And also, by providing this, this continuity, even if people park there, the emergency vehicles will have enough room to maneuver.
Okay.
I believe Chief Dominguez, you.
Dominguez, Melrider Park. And I guess that's the only thing we're kind of looking for clarification, is this gonna be, is it gonna be raised, is it gonna be like a rolling curve that we can go over? And I guess the, the concern that we have, if you can kind of see it, you have 20 feet here, so if you have any vehicle parked there from this, these points forward, you're not gonna be able to access now. I know he mentioned they have the continuity, but if you have a vehicle here with 20 feet, an ambulance or a fire engine won't be able to get through there. Now, the minimum size of these cul-de-sacs, the fire code requires 96, the, I think it's a subdivision ordinance, I think that requires 100. But against our concern was this 20 feet.
I mean, we can go as, you know, we can increase those to 24, this is just for the presentation, and those things can be addressed as parallel to the one-stop shop.
And then the other thing, even if we do go to the 24, you would still have to show us that you have at least a 28-foot turning radius.
Okay.
And then I think we would probably even have to fire lane the inside.
This is just a typical example, but all those issues can be addressed at the one-stop shop.
And I just did want to clarify, because we did mention the 100 feet, but even if you were to bump this out to the 100, and let's say this got larger and we stayed with the 20, it really wouldn't make a difference for us, so I just wanted to clarify it so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, and, and this, this concept has been used before, and it's already in place, and you, I'll invite you to go Google Translagos in McAllen, and you're gonna see this. If you want to, we can show you some of the pictures that we have for the presentation, so you can be able to see what we're talking about, and they're already in place in McAllen. In other places of the US, Richard Harrison Institute has been doing this for quite a long time.
What is staff's point as far as their requested variances and what they're asking for?
So based on the, what you said, in the valley, did you guys expand and, and make those adjustments or?
We didn't work on that development, but, but Rick Harrison, the designer, he did those in the valley.
But it wasn't to those dimensions on the paper, they actually readjusted for the fire department, or like?
I don't know if they readjusted, it's just accommodating the needs of an emergency vehicle.
Right. Yeah, the biggest issue here is, is fire, and, you know, we just want to make sure that it complies with.
Yes. And we want.
It is important, especially if this is the first time we're doing a project like this, we want to make sure that all that needs.
That is, that is the, the, this is in Translagos in McAllen, and you can see the way it was designed.
Do you know that?
And, and I measured the, the width of that, the streets around the, the circle, and they're 20 feet. Here, we're gonna go with 24.
I, I can definitely see Chief Dominguez's concern, because I mean, we have people parking the sidewalk as it is already, and then if they do park on the sidewalk, which most people do, it's gonna be.
Because it's, it's just about access, right? You wonder, if you have an, let's say, the last couple of homes on there, it's very unlikely that something's gonna happen, but let's say something does happen, you do have a vehicle parked, you're not gonna be able to get as close as you need to, and that, that's why the code asks for that access. I mean, by all means, we're available to you, you want to sit down and talk turning radius, we can talk width, I mean, we're, we're at your disposal, but in our comment, we just noted that it didn't have the 100 feet, and we just wanted to make it clear that there were a couple of other issues besides the 100-foot diameter.
Yes, no, 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 we'll meet, we'll meet the requirements, it was just an exhibit, but we'll make sure that whatever is needed for the emergency vehicles to be able to maneuver, we'll provide, we'll provide, we'll provide the, the, the dimensions that are necessary.
Thank you. Are there any questions from, from the Commission, or any comments from staff? Yes, so what are the wishes of the Commission?
I'd like to motion to approve.
Subject to comments.
Uh, subject to comments, yes.
Okay, I have a motion. I'll second. Okay, I'll.
What was the motion?
To approve, subject to the comments.
Okay, you were not, we're not gonna consider the, the, the removing of what?
We're, we're, we're. Working with the dimensions that are necessary to maneuver, for the emergency vehicle to maneuver around the, the, the item.
Do we have to make that motion with that? Well, we have a motion.
No, I mean, they're, they're gonna, they're only fires, they should be fine.
Okay. So we have a draft. We have a motion in a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
There's no.
Motion carries.
There's two variances.
Sir?
Oh, the two variances, the three. So do those need a separate?
Probably do it in separate, separate motions. One motion.
Oh, they're like contradicting the way it is now.
Would you like to recall vote and recall motion?
Yes, I recall it.
You need to recall the second first.
I'll recall the second.
So recall second?
Recall motion.
Recall a motion. Would you like to propose a new motion?
Yes, so if we approve the variances, what, which items need to go to planning number one?
One and two.
One and two.
Okay, so then I motion to approve and amending the comments to remove planning number one and number two.
I second that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 8I, preliminary consideration of the plat of lot two, block one, the coves at Winfield Commercial Unit Two, the intent is multifamily.
Yes, sir. For the record, the applicant is Kilam Development, engineer Mesquite Engineering, proposed use is multifamily, the zoning for this one lot development is R1. Location view? Aerial view? The proposed plat? Staff comments, planning, fire? Parks and leisure? And the proposed motion?
Thank you.
Oh, once again, good evening, Hugo Secca with Kilam Development and Mesquite Engineering. We don't have any issue with the comments. Do you have any questions?
Motion to close and recommend 8I.
Second.
As presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now moving on to reconsideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Item 99, 9A, preliminary reconsideration of the plat of lot one, block one, the coves at Winfield Commercial Unit One, the intent is commercial, the purpose of this reconsideration is to reduce total acreage.
Yes, sir. For, for the record, the applicant is Kilam Development, engineer Mesquite Engineering, proposed use is commercial, the zoning for this one lot development is R1. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? The proposed reconsideration of the plat? Staff comments, planning, fire? Parks and leisure? The proposed motion?
Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, Hugo Secca, Kilam Development, Mesquite Engineering, we don't have any issue with the comment.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item 9B, preliminary reconsideration of Lasco Plata Celito Lindo subdivision, the intent is commercial, the purpose of this reconsideration is to add additional acreage.
Yes, sir, for the, for the record, the applicant is Celito Lindo, engineers Holland Engineering, serving, proposed use is commercial, the zoning for this one lot development is R1A, however, is currently being, is going through the rezoning process from an R1A to B3. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? The proposed reconsideration of the plat? Staff comments, planning? Proposed motion?
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Miguel Jimenez with Holland Engineering, and we concur with all comments, in case you have any questions, we'll get answered.
Thank you.
Motion to close and introduce 9B as recommended.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We're now moving on to consideration of the following final plats and final replats. If there's no objection from staff or from the Commission, can I have a motion to hear items 10A through 10I together?
I have a motion to read items 10A through 10I all at once.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion now to, for action for items 10A through 10I?
Motion to approve.
The motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Can we now read those items into record?
Of course, Mr. Chairman. For the record, 10A, final consideration of the replat of lot 14, block six, Pueblo Nuevo subdivision into lots 14A and 14B, block six, Pueblo Nuevo subdivision. Intent is residential. Final consideration of, of Seville, Seville Ranch plat, intent is residential. Final consideration of the plat of the coves at Winfield, phase 4A, the intent is residential. Final consideration of plat of the coves at Winfield, phase 5A, the intent is residential. Final consideration of plat of the coves at Winfield, phase 6A, the intent is residential. Final consideration of the plat of the coves at Winfield, phase 6B, the intent is residential. Final consideration of the plat of the coves at Winfield, phase 7A, the intent is residential. Final consideration of the plat of the coves at Winfield, phase 7B, the intent is residential. Final consideration of the plat of the coves at Winfield, phase 10A, the intent is residential.
Thank you. We're now moving to the last part of item, consideration of model subdivision compliance. 11A, consideration of model subdivision, compliance of Las Aldeas subdivision, phase one, the intent is residential, mobile home lots. May I have a motion of action on that item?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Any directors' comments before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, just, just a note that you were in attendance, but we, we attended the, the National Planning Conference. I thought we took Rafa Vidauri, who is AICP certified, who had to get his credits, but it was very organized, very well done. I think, you know, you would agree that it was well done. They talked, there was a lot of talk about density, creating density. I think we show that some of the practice we're doing, we're creating some density as you could, you could see with the QDs. So there was a, there was a good conversation, a lot of areas like that. And so I'm happy to say that, that, you know, I think we're, we're following some of the national items that are of concern. And so that's it, just, we attended it.
Thank you. Can I, well, we don't have quorum to, to close the meetings, so hopefully for Commissioner Garcia to come back.
Is he coming there?
Yeah, this one's here. He's coming back.
He's coming.
I've not worked here all night.
I know, we gotta do it.
In the meantime, can I ask a question?
Sure, of course.
Mr. Novaro, is it possible, do you think, to create a search function to look through the plat, the past planning agendas? Like to see if like things have come up in the past? Yeah, mention this to Ms. Guerra.
We can ask if our IT has our, they, you know, they can facilitate some, something.
We could, are you talking about like just, like our website?
Yeah.
Yeah, on your website, like where we have all the agendas that we can be able to search minutes or agendas to see if like a certain address has come up in the past or like be able to look through like the historical aspect of things.
I'll have to go through every agenda look.
Oh, yeah, this happened already.
Yeah, yeah, like how do we know?
That's what I'm doing now. We'll talk to IT and see what they can do to help us out.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, may I have a?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries, we adjourn.